Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order this Monday, August 25th, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors. Our first order of business tonight is to go into closed meeting. Be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2 dot, 2 dot 2 dash 3711, five, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. One, project number two, zero two five dash zero zero nine. Two, project number two, zero two five dash zero two seven. And, one, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. One, agency on aging. Two, planning commission. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ma'am? Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Seven I.
We are in closed meeting.
We're going to come back to order. We're coming out of closed meeting. So the first item is to, is there a motion to come out of closed meeting to return to regular session?
That moves.
Say.
Madam Clerk, if you will call the roll, please.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Seven aye.
Next is to certify the closed meeting. Whereas, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas, Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Is there a motion?
That moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Kits.
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Seven aye.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by our county administrator, Angie Hill. Angie?
Please rise as you're able for a moment of silence and then join me as I lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. We have two public hearings on our agenda this evening. The first public hearing is for an ordinance to establish a voter satellite office. Andrew, did you have anything before we opened the public hearing?
Yes, we have a little bit of information that Jen's going to pull up for you about cost related to having satellite locations in two areas. We advertised a public hearing for three. The third one was at Shawsville Middle School. The registrar was able to go to the location on August 19th and do testing to see if the system complied with the state Office of Elections requirements from an IT perspective and security, and it did not. We originally tried to schedule or entertain the Meadowbrook location as the voting site for a satellite because that is the typical polling place in the area. However, that location was already scheduled for those two Saturdays, so it was not available. So Marty and I spoke and he indicated that we could bring this to you with just the two locations. We would not be able to add a location, but that we could bring it with these locations. We provided some information to you, and I provided this to you late today. The cost estimate we had received from, for the printing of the postcards that we spoke about previously was revised because we got a lower bid. And we also only included the cost to staff those two sites. Also, the registrars here, if you have any questions later.
Okay, so before we open the public hearing, does anybody have any questions about this information? Of course, during our new business, we can have a longer conversation about the satellite voting. I am not seeing any questions, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. We did have a sign-up sheet out front and several people have signed up to address the Board on the topic of voter satellite offices for absentee voting in person for the November 4th, 2025 general election. The first person that signed up is Wayman Pack. If you want to come forward, you'll have four minutes. Please state your name and where you reside. When I get to the end of the list, if there's anybody else here that would like to speak to this topic, we'll open the floor. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Wayman Pack and I live on Piney Woods Road in Reiner. And this is your opportunity as a board to again show that you care about excessive and unnecessary spending of our tax dollars. The opportunity to show that you are not going to bow to the wishes of a few loud voices. This is your opportunity to come together, Democrat, Republican, independent, it doesn't matter your political affiliation. This is the time to agree as a duly-elected Board of Fiscal Representatives of this county to prove that the wants of a few do not mean that you have to cater to their whims. This is the time to show the citizens that you swore to represent in a manner that is best for the county, that you have the courage to say no. Say no to those who may bombard you with phone calls and emails, to sway you from the common sense to allow them to get what they want regardless of the cost or necessity. Say no to unnecessary spending of our tax dollars. Most of you were upset at the recent decision of the school board to not fund school resource officers. That board instead of funding protection for our students gave themselves a raise. You were upset enough to rescind an amount from their FY '26 budget equal to amount that you thought had been budgeted for that line item. Although legal, it was not a popular decision for you to make, and you stood up and did it anyway. It's time for you to stand up again. Tell the citizens that complained that it's too far, expensive, and/or time-consuming to cast an early ballot at the registrar's office to utilize the process that the state of Virginia has given them to vote absentee. Let us all use the resources already available to us instead of spending taxpayers' money on something that is not needed. One of the first qualifications to legally vote is that you must be of adult age in the eyes of the government. As an adult, you shouldn't need any mailings to remind you of when and where to vote. There are 45 days prior to Election Day to do so. I realize that not everyone works a schedule that allows them to get to the polls while they're open on Election Day, and so does the state. I've been in that situation myself many times, but I have always found a way to vote. That's why they made absentee voting free and so easy it hardly takes any effort at all. The head of our federal government has recently been in the news saying that absentee voting is rife with fraud and not secure. The fact is, this same person has a history of voting absentee at least three times in the past. When questioned by a reporter on why they did it, if they actually believed it was not secure, the answer was because I can. I believe that if he can, I can too, and so can you. Once an absentee ballot is requested, it is mailed to you in a timely manner. Follow the directions for marking your ballot, seal the prepaid envelope, and put it back in the mail, all without spending one red cent. No gas, no travel time, no expense to the voter whatsoever. Nothing could be simpler except not voting at all. I was raised to believe and still do that many people before me suffered, were ridiculed, and so even died in the struggle to allow all of us to vote in this country. I for one will do everything in my power to honor their fights and deaths and cast my vote in every election in which I am eligible to participate. And I plan on doing it from the comfort and convenience of my own home. Not on the way to a football game, not on the way as I leave for vacation, and not standing in a line on Election Day, but in the privacy of my own home, in my own time, with no one standing behind me wishing I would hurry because they're running late to an appointment. The county does not need to spend taxpayer dollars to purchase 65,000 postcards, have them printed, and mailed. I don't know the cost of bulk mailing either, but according to everything I've found online, that's at least 30 cents each, and that's $19,500. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Harlan Luskarten, and then following that is Carolyn Givens. Welcome.
Harlan Luskarten. Vicker Switch, Crab Creek, Switchback. I've come to advocate for establishing the satellite offices in Blacksburg Community Center and the Shawsville Middle School and the Auburn High School. If there needs to be substitutions because it doesn't work there in one of the spots, then that'd be fine. I'd like to see this allows more people access to vote, and that's what the democracy is all about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have Ms. Givens next, and then following that is Ann Hess. Welcome.
Hello. I wanted to say that I am for every which way we can get.
Can you start by saying your name and where in the county you reside?
Okay, Caroline Givens, and I'm in Montgomery County and live in Blacksburg.
Thank you.
I wanted to say that I think we need to have this extra opportunity for people to vote. Last fall, it was well utilized at the community center. And we need, we just need to make sure, this is a tough time, and we need to make sure that people have the ability to get to, to do, vote in a way that's most comfortable for them. And because it was so well-used before, has been in the past, I think we need to keep it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hess, and following Ms. Hess, we have Cindy Barden. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Ann Hess. I live at 70 Crescent Drive in Christiansburg. And at one time, I sat up there, not at this, in this building, but in the old building. And I was thrilled because I represented District B at that time, which had actually part of Blacksburg as well as the town of Christiansburg and part of Montgomery County. So I felt like I was, had the privilege of representing all the county. And I want to commend you for representing all of the county to try to get everybody able to have the opportunity to participate in early voting in their communities. And I'm sorry that it's not working out for Shawsville, but I want to cheer you on and ask that you pass the ordinance and have the ordinance. and have the early voting in the other places. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Cindy Barden, and then that's the last name that we have on the list for this evening. So anybody else can come forward at that point. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Cindy Barden. I live at 60 Crescent Drive, Christiansburg. And I just want to speak in support of having any way that we can get as many people out to vote as possible. We need to not be afraid of who people are going to vote for, but give everybody ample opportunity to voice their vote. And so I think we could spend money on way worse things than making sure that everybody has access to cast their vote. Thank you.
Thank you. I do see other people coming forward. And you're welcome to come forward and sit on the front row if you kind of want a stage to give your comments. Welcome. Hi.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Graff. I live in 85 South Philly Drive in Christiansburg. If we want to have a truly effective democracy, we need to support the ability of every voter to have as easy a capacity to vote as possible. There's a lot of people that work long hours and they just can't make it on voting day. And I personally do not trust the mail. They've done so many cutbacks. I've had too many things lost in the mail for me to want to trust my vote to it. So I personally vote early. It has been a real blessing, and I'm very fortunate to live close to it in Christiansburg. But there's a lot of people in Blacksburg that just don't have easy access to get to Christiansburg. And I think it would be really, really helpful to have it there, to have it in Reiner, to have it as many places spread out in this community as we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Navid. I'm from Montgomery County. I'm a student at Blacksburg High School. And even though I'm not allowed to vote, I'm not old enough to vote. I believe that participation in democracy should be accessible to everyone. As Thomas Jefferson said, "We in America do not have a government by a majority. We have a government by the majority who participate." And right now, the only early voting site in Montgomery County is the registrar's office in Christiansburg. For many in Blacksburg, that's a 20 to 30 minute round trip. And if you are a Virginia Tech student without a car, a single mother working multiple jobs, or a senior with limited mobility, that trip can be a deciding factor between casting a ballot or staying home. In 2022, more than 30% of Virginians voted early, but Montgomery County's early turnout was much lower because geography makes it harder to vote here than in other areas of the state. Blacksburg is home to nearly 45,000 residents and more than 37,000 seasonal Virginia Tech residents because this is where the voters are. Yet they face the greatest barriers to access. How is it that in Christiansburg, with 22,000 people, half of Blacksburg's population, they get access to early voting, easy access to early voting, but we in Blacksburg do not? A Blacksburg early voting site would make participation more fair, reduce congestion at the Christiansburg office, and shorten election day lines for everyone. This is not a partisan issue. It's an issue about fairness and accessibility and making sure every eligible voice in Montgomery County is heard. As someone too young to vote myself, I ask you on behalf of my classmates, my neighbors, and my community, please make it easier for those who can vote to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Hello.
Hi, my name is Tyler Morgan. I live in 1424 Christine Court. I am a student at Virginia Tech. I am entering my junior year, and first day of school day was fantastic. I would like to be on behalf of the students there at Virginia Tech. Many of them are there for four years out of their lives, which, and in those four years, they're there for at least like nine months out of the year. So policies that get affected in Blacksburg and Christiansburg are policies that affect those students directly. Students at Virginia Tech should have the opportunity to be able to vote whenever and however they need to, be it early through mail-in ballots or on November election night. But sometimes on election night, it's, lines get long, students have classes. Mail is not always trustworthy. I know I'm waiting for Xfinity to deliver to my house and it's been like three weeks. And so Virginia Tech students are, because they don't have vehicles, they are disproportionately affected by only a single poll place in Christiansburg or voting on November 4th. And so I urge you guys to vote for this so that everyone has equal opportunity to access their ballots. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome.
My name is Caleb Hughes. I live on Heather Drive in Blacksburg. So I'd also like to join some of the other young people that have come here tonight to voice the absolute need for an early vote location here in Blacksburg. I believe there are almost 7,000 students at Virginia Tech that don't have a car. That means it would take over an hour each way for them to get on the bus and go to Christiansburg to be able to vote. For students that have super busy schedules, for students that don't know or are not high propensity voters, they're already dissuaded from voting here in our county. And this just adds to that dissuasion for that ability to vote. I think it's super critical for fairness, and I'd just like to join my fellow colleagues in advocating for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Austin Ardon, 240 Mulberry, Christiansburg, District D. I'm here to advocate for the satellite site. Heavy is a crown, right, that makes these decisions. I would not want to be in your chair. There are things that we don't see. But there's a lot that we do, right? You have a lot of voters in this district, some who don't have the ability to get to the voting site on specific times or specific days. I have a 99-year-old grandma who lives in my basement. It's a lot easier with the more sites I have. Please think carefully and look at the actual number who come for and who would come against because voting access should, should not be a partisan issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward to speak on the voter satellite offices? Okay. Welcome.
My name is Diana Richardson. I live at 1431 Breckenridge Drive, Blacksburg, Virginia. And I am here to advocate for satellite voting sites. As Navid said a few minutes ago, our democracy is only as strong as the participation in it. And voting rights is one of our most important rights. So yeah, I think it is very important for everyone to have the easiest and best opportunity to vote. And I'd like to say one other thing that hasn't been mentioned a lot tonight, but I have heard that there's also an issue about the cost of sending postcards. I think that that is a separate issue. I think that the issue of having early voting sites, satellite sites, should be determined on its own merits. If there is a substantial cost associated with sending postcards, I think that's something that should be discussed and addressed separately by the board, if I may be so bold. And I do want to say that I think that our office of elections and the registrar and the staff are hard workers. They do an excellent job administering our elections, and I think we should be thankful and very grateful for them. In terms of costs, one of the stated reasons was that people, some people, are not sure where they're supposed to vote. I think that's an issue more in terms of same-day voting instead of early voting when people have to determine where their polling place is. And if postcards are, if someone determines that they should be sent, then I think that has been the issue about sending postcards more, more so than for early voting satellite sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have anybody else that wants to come forward to speak on this topic? Seeing nobody else coming forward, I'm going to close this public hearing. And we do have another public hearing this evening. This is on an ordinance to approve an agreement between Montgomery County and the Public Service Authority. I don't think we have a presentation for this, and I didn't have anybody that signed up to speak to this public hearing. But if anybody in the audience would like to address the ordinance between Montgomery County and the Public Service Authority, please come forward at this time. Okay, seeing nobody come forward for that public hearing, I'm going to close that one as well. And we'll move to public address. Public address, you can speak on any topic that you choose. You have four minutes, and I do ask that you start with by stating your name and where in the county you reside. I did not have anybody sign up in advance to speak during public address this evening. Would anybody in the audience like to come forward? Welcome, sir.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Bob Beard. I live here in Christiansburg. I'd like to speak regarding Dr. Breggin's legacy. You know, he's been our superintendent for the last couple of years, and I know he's, he's leaving and so forth. And, you know, during the last couple of years, our, our SOL scores have blown the state average. We've got a good number of percentage of kids now who aren't reading, are reading or doing math on grade level. You know, we have a, a teacher's union came in, came under his watch. We've got, he raised 20 million, he raised the school budget $20 million. And we look, you know, I was having a discussion with the previous superintendent, and we couldn't name any new programs. You know, we got $20 million new dollars, but no new programs. We had the DE department come, come do a public address live and, and public saying they're going to keep the, change the name from DEI, and, but they're going to keep the same mission statement, same budget and everything else. They're going to keep DEI when it was mandated federally that we had to get rid of DEI, but they said they're going to keep it. Dr. Breggin had, not once, not twice, but groups of people go to the white privilege conferences. Okay? So we did that, okay? And that, that wasn't good enough. He, during the, in July, during the principal's retreat, he had the founder of the Privilege Institute, the White Privilege Conferences, come to the principal's retreat and teach 20 principles all about white privilege and white guilt or whatever it's all about. Because I, you know, he won't, he won't tell us what, what, why, why we need, who's racist or what's racist in our society, in our school system, that we have to have all this going on. And he won't, you know, we've asked for public presentations, and he won't do it. So, you know, I don't understand why we can't have transparency when he spent $20 million. We've got $20 million new dollars, and we're going to have, we have identified racism as being a critical issue in our school system, yet we can't have a public, a public meeting about what the issues are, where, who's stemming it, where's it coming from, the whole nine yards. We've got kids who can't read, who aren't reading at a grade level. We've got kids who aren't doing math at grade level, and yet we're doing, and I forgot to mention that we've got a new curriculum, SCL, social emotional learning, which has nothing to do with excellence. Again, you know, I know Dr. Breggin is leaving and, but we, you know, remind you also, we're paying him $240,000 a year. He is the highest paid state employee west of Richmond, and we're paying him $240,000. And our school system is, you know, is failing. And so that's all I've got to say is, I want more and more parents to homeschool their kids. There's only way to, to address this issue is homeschool your kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward during public address and address the board? Sheriff Parton? You have four minutes. I saw you checking the rules. This might be the only time I get to enforce rules.
I hope I won't take that long. So, good evening, members of the board, Madam Chair, Mrs. Superintendent. Good to see everyone. Let me start with the, quickly, the sheriff's office is blessed and very fortunate to have a full complement SWAT team. We have 14 SWAT team members. And just briefly, SWAT team people are kind of like you've heard me say about SROs. They're strange cats. They work hard. They usually work harder. They usually play harder. And they usually end up in more life and death situations than anyone else. And I think we could include some facets of the military in that equation. Ever since I have been holding the office of sheriff and before that, I have been trying to secure a vehicle to protect our SWAT team. I have not been successful, and when I say trying, I mean trying. I have looked at wrecked vehicles. I have tried to get the government to give us a vehicle. I have looked at all kinds of used vehicles. And the reason I'm not on the agenda tonight is because a situation has presented itself to me that has moved rapidly. And I have been able to secure what I believe to be a very fair price for a SWAT vehicle to protect the lives of our SWAT members facing the most dangerous of dangerous situations. Unfortunately, and I mean this by no means as a threat, but unfortunately, if I can't make this happen now, we will not have a SWAT team. Because I cannot, in good faith, and more importantly, in good conscience, put the lives of our people on the line any longer. They are riding around now and performing their duties in the most dangerous of situations in a 20-year-old tin can ambulance that would not even secure them or protect them from a small handgun round, much less the weapons that we face in these times. So, good news. I'm not here asking for any new monies. I'm asking for your blessing to let me spend $398,000 of my carryover funding for the sheriff's office. And I can make this happen within the next couple of days. The other big issue with a SWAT vehicle is they can take 18 to 24 months once an order is placed to build. We have found that vehicle in the state, ready to go, waiting to be purchased. And the reason it's moving so quickly for, for us anyway is because we're not the only agency that knows there's one already out there. So there are several other law enforcement agencies around the country looking at the same vehicle. So, thank you for your time, and I know you can't ask any questions now, but if you have any, I'd be more than happy to answer at any, any point.
Can you stay for a little while with us this evening?
I plan on it.
Okay. Yeah, if you'll just hang out with us, and we'll probably have some time to ask you some questions.
Thank you so much for your time.
We're still in public address. Would anybody else like to come forward and address the board on any topic? You got to start by stating your name and where you reside again.
Hi, Austin Ardon, 240 Mulberry, Christiansburg, Virginia. I'll keep it pretty brief. I just couldn't let it go. I don't get to come out here very often. I have some young kids, old grandma, but your schools are pretty awesome. You have some awesome people working in your schools. I've walked every single hallway many, many times. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward during public address? Okay, seeing nobody else come forward, I am going to close public address, and we'll move on to addendum. Is there anything for addendum this evening?
I'd like to ask the board if we could add to the addendum what the sheriff brought up tonight.
Add to new business?
Right.
The ability to purchase that vehicle using his carryover funds?
Right.
Sure. Is there a second for that motion? Sure, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that. It's his money, let's see how it goes.
Okay. Is there any discussion on adding this to new business? We'll add it as our first item of new business. Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, if you will call the roll, please. And this is a vote on adding this to new business.
Aye.
Mr. King? Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demots?
Aye.
Seven aye. Okay, we'll take that up as our first item of new business tonight. Next on our agenda is a work session where we are going to discuss tax relief for the elderly and disabled program. Is there a motion to go into work session?
Sir moved.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please. Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Demots?
Aye.
Seven aye. Great. So we do have a presentation from Mark McRuder for, this is an update to the tax relief for elderly and disabled program. Welcome, Mark.
Good evening. Okay, I wanted to talk a little bit about the county's tax relief for the elderly and disabled program. So, last August, the board was presented with increased income and net worth levels for the county's tax relief for the elderly and disabled program. These income and net worth levels were increased based on Social Security cost of living increases for two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five. The presentation tonight is to update the board on potential increases to income and/or net worth limits for the tax relief for the elderly program based on two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-six Social Security cost of living increases. Give you a little background, the criteria for eligibility. There is an age limit, you have to be sixty-five years or older, or have some sort of disability where you're permanently and totally disabled. Maximum income limit is based on combined dwelling income. It excludes the first ten thousand of income of each relative other than the spouse of the owner living in the dwelling, and the first ten thousand of income for an owner that is permanently disabled. Net financial worth limit is the net combined financial worth, including the value of all equitable interest as of December thirty-one of the preceding calendar year, and it excludes the value of the dwelling, dwelling furnishings, and up to one acre of land. Back in two thousand eleven, the state changed the program to allow localities to determine their own limits. Localities can extend tax relief for the elderly and disabled to include dwellings that are not, or that are jointly owned by individuals who are not all sixty-five or permanently and totally disabled. We do this currently. For example, if one owner is ninety and the other is fifty, both would qualify because one person is at least ninety, and they would meet the qualification standards. Talk a little bit about our current program. So the current program was approved by the board in the fall of two thousand twenty-four. The annual income limits are zero to forty-five thousand. There's a hundred percent tax exemption with a net financial worth of two hundred and five thousand. For forty-five thousand to, forty-five thousand and one to fifty-six thousand, sixty percent exemption for a net worth of two hundred and five thousand. And then for income of fifty-six thousand and one to seventy thousand, there's a forty percent exemption, again, the net financial worth is two hundred and five thousand. Talk a little bit about the citizens served. So in tax year two thousand twenty-four, there were a total of six hundred and fifteen citizens served in real estate and seventy-two in mobile homes. For the two thousand twenty-five tax year, there's currently five hundred and sixty-nine in real estate, and mobile homes is not currently available. What I'd like to say about the two thousand twenty-five numbers is that those values are not complete, as owners have until the end of this calendar year to apply. So, next year, when we update that, that number will be more in line with the six fifteen number once everybody has had the opportunity. Also, for the mobile homes, that information is not available because the commissioner of the revenues office has not completed the personal property book yet. This next slide shows a breakdown by locality, and as you can see from the breakdown between two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five, most of the citizens that are being served are in the county and the town of Christiansburg. Talk a little bit about how we compare to other localities. So this chart shows how Montgomery County compares to other localities of similar size or close proximity, and you can see that we are in line with others in our region and others of our size. Give you an update on the Social Security cost of living increases. So, and we estimated in two thousand twenty-five that there would be a two-point-six percent increase. The actual two thousand twenty-five value came in at two-point-five. For two thousand twenty-six, the estimate is two-point-seven percent. The two thousand twenty-six estimate has not been finalized. Throughout the year, that number has ranged from two and a half to two-point-six, and then recently, it was increased to two-point-seven as inflation is still rather sticky. Go over the proposed changes that we're putting forward for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. Tax relief at a hundred percent, we're gonna try and increase that from zero to forty-six thousand. At sixty percent, forty-six thousand and one to fifty-eight thousand. And at forty percent, fifty-eight thousand and one to seventy-two thousand. And increase the financial net worth from two hundred and five thousand to two hundred and ten thousand. And these increases are based on the increases of Social Security that are being presented. Give you a little background on the cost of tax relief. This is just the cost of the tax relief for the elderly and disabled program. Last year, it was seven hundred and twenty-four thousand. For two thousand twenty-five, it's sitting right at six hundred and eighty-five thousand. Again, that number will go up as people continue to apply for that through the end of the year. Talk a little bit about the two towns. Both the town of Christiansburg and Blacksburg offer a tax relief program and have maintained the same limits that were established by the county in order to reduce citizen confusion. These slides have already been shared with the two towns for review. Next steps are to get board consensus regarding the proposed income and net financial worth limits. After this presentation, I will notify the town of the proposed changes under consideration for the town councils to consider. The board will then have a resolution authorizing advertisement on September eighth. We'll schedule and hold a public hearing on October fourteenth, and then the board will have the opportunity to vote on that ordinance on October fourteenth. And that's what I have for this evening, and I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mark. And thank you for kind of hearing the board a few years ago and coming back and letting us revisit this every year. I think it is impactful. So, what kind of questions? I know you spent a lot of time giving us information to hopefully answer some of those questions in advance, but does anybody have any questions? Supervisor Bone?
Great job, thank you very much. On page ten, I was just doing some quick math, and two thousand twenty-five, the upper limit, quote unquote, should have been fifty-six thousand three seventy-five. So you technically rounded down, but if we carried the percentages forward, fifty-eight thousand on the upper limit for the sixty percent line, fifty-eight thousand is appropriate. Is there a reason why you rounded down?
So, the way we do the calculation is we take the actual value of the cost of living increases and then adjust that from the base year. So, if we had an estimate, and our estimate was incorrect, then we would go back to the year and correct it to the actual value. So every value that is there goes back to the first year, which was, I think, two thousand eleven or two thousand thirteen, and then adjusted from that point forward. The only number that is not an estimate, or that is not an actual number, is two thousand twenty-six number, because it's based on an estimate of two-point-seven percent.
Is there, I don't know if my colleagues, care is not the right word, would think that there might be some value to increase the limits in five hundred dollar increments instead of thousand dollar increments? And we might catch a few more people eventually, over time. Like, when I saw that, the calculation that I just did while he was speaking, it came out at fifty-six, the middle number of that chart, the upper limit, quote unquote, should have been fifty-six thousand three seventy-five, which would have been rounded up to fifty-six five hundred. It's not a lot, but it's a lot to some people, right? So, I don't know. I just thought I'd throw that out there. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? Supervisor Grafsky?
Thanks, Mark, for all this information. On the net financial worth and that calculation, so I know we exclude the value of the dwelling, furnishings, et cetera. Now, if there are any, you know, leans against that, a mortgage, you know, outstanding mortgage, is that, is that netted into the financial?
Yeah, so your net financial worth would be assets, all assets minus your liability, so.
Okay.
It would net that out.
So it just, it wouldn't be in the asset part of that calculation, but it would be in the liability?
That's right. So it would net itself off. The other thing, it's the, it's also one acre of land, so it's the value of the dwelling plus one acre of land.
Up to one acre, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor King?
On the Social Security cost of living increase, estimated two-point-seven percent. So, are you factoring in too, when people on Social Security gets an increase, their health insurance goes up too? And most time, it takes most of the increase for the Medicaid, Medicare?
This is strictly what the cost of living increase is for Social Security. So we mirrored, you know, this is what we've done the past couple of years. Whatever the cost of living increase for Social Security is, we apply that to every limit, and it's based on the actual values plus the estimated increase, which at this point is two-point-seven percent.
All right, thank you.
So what we need to come out of this work session, the guidance that we need to give to staff, is do we want to move forward with advertising for a public hearing, correct? On, can you turn on your mic?
Yeah.
It's on.
Thanks. You could talk about and give consensus in work session, and then if you agree with the numbers Mark presented, at the next board meeting, we'll have a resolution authorizing staff to advertise that ordinance.
Okay.
So it's step one of step two process.
Okay. So then to Supervisor Bone's point, we have the proposed amounts here, and then also the request to consider five hundred dollars on the top ends of those? Okay.
Can I also make another comment?
Sure, go ahead.
So I just pulled up the CPI for the last several years, Consumer Price Index. And I, and I thought, I've been told, that Social Security increases don't keep up with CPI, and it seems to be true. So, there's a way to keep up with cost of living. Certainly, it sounds like we have all the flexibility to do that. And there's no doubt that the Social Security increase is a good metric to use, right? I'm wondering if there's another one that we possibly can use that will get us closer to, get these constituents closer to the actual impact of inflation on them. So I know that's a tough ask for this year, but it might be worth thinking about for next year, so.
That's constructive, yeah, to look at other ways to calculate as we examine this annually in the future.
If you think about it, if you start at two thousand eleven, which is great, you know, because we want to stay consistent, an impact of one-tenth of a percent is huge, just being off one-tenth of a percent. But I was even looking at two thousand twenty with the Great Recession, and the CPI was like six or seven percent, when a lot of people were experiencing double digits, right? So that's really hard for this segment of our populace. Thank you.
And just to add on to that, you know, if you look at, because we're trying to segment out a subpopulation, you know, that is financially challenged, constrained, whether it's on a fixed income, because of a disability, things like that. You know, if you compare that to something like the federal poverty guidelines, which those are also moved in step with a derivative of the CPI, because that more closely reflects kind of the reality of, you know, economic conditions. So I'd be supportive of something, you know, looking at how we index this or adjusting.
The other thing, for someone who's disabled, they probably, and I don't know this for truth, probably have more health expenses, and healthcare costs tend to increase higher than regular inflation. So that's something else to consider.
I was just gonna add that Todd made a really good point about the Social Security and the healthcare. Sort of just take sadder areas away, right? So I think those are all things we should look at.
If you want us to bring some other choices based on some of the feedback that you've given, we can do that for the next meeting for September the eighth, before you advertise.
That, I think that would be helpful, because it sounds like coming from multiple places, we'd like to do a deeper dive beyond COLA.
Yeah, I mean, one of the challenges is that there's so many different indexes. CPI, you know, you have the CPI U, you have the, you know, which is the urban number, then you have one that's, you know, it's not an easy metric, because some of them take into different variables that affect people. And so, yeah, we would be glad to, you know, look at the different options that are out there and show you what the splits are, and we can run it from the original year, which I believe was, we went through a period of time where we didn't change it. So we wanted to go back to that specific time and say, let's move it where it should have been if we had adjusted it all the way. And the board had picked the Social Security increase at that time, but we certainly can, you know, run some different scenarios and see how it pans out.
So we can have another work session at our September eighth meeting if you think that gives you enough time to gather some more information?
I don't know if Mark, you know, if he's gonna be on vacation or something, we'll still fix that. But I think we can do that easily for you.
We can do the calculation pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, that was all we had for work session this evening, so is there a motion to come out of work session?
Sir moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please. Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Demots?
Aye.
Seven aye. Okay, and we'll move to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Sir moved.
Second.
Any discussion on our consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please. Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Grafsky?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demots?
Aye.
Seven aye. Okay, now we're moving to new business. Our first item of new business we're bringing from our addendum, so we're not talking about the Hazard Mitigation Plan yet. Sorry to delay all the excitement. We're gonna talk about a vehicle for the sheriff's department. As our sheriff indicated, the total cost of this vehicle is three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. And I know, Angie, you might have you might have some more information on what the carryover balance is and kind of where those funds would be coming from, because it's not new money.
Right.
So, we'll do that, and then we'll see if anybody has any questions for our sheriff.
Okay. We pulled together the sheriff's sharing carryover balance from his expenditures were about $653,000, and then the Speed Zone monies that he collected in fiscal year 25 were about $250,000, which is a total of almost $903,000. If we, if the board wanted to fund this, I know another item that we've discussed funding with some one-time money is SRO vehicles. If both of those were funded, there would still be a balance of a little over $100,000. So, there is sufficient one-time funding to cover these items.
And thank you for specifying that it is one-time funding, because these are one-time expenses. Does anybody have any questions, either for Sheriff Parton or for staff? Supervisor Bone, you're shaking your head, yes?
One thing is the purchase with the one-time money, the other is the ongoing maintenance for the future years. Is it within the range of keeping taxes neutral? Am I saying that right? Neutral?
Neutral is the right, yes.
Tax rate.
I'll have to defer to the sheriff as to the maintenance cost.
Sheriff Parton, can you, yeah, can you address how you would maintain the vehicle? Would it just go into your regular fleet, on your fleet maintenance schedule?
I would assume so.
Okay.
But is there excess money in that pot to take on this new vehicle?
Some of the items would be covered by the funding that you have now for the former ambulance that you use.
Sure.
But this is, this sounds like another, another level of care.
It is another level.
Right.
Yes, most definitely. But...
Don't get me wrong, I'm very supportive of it. I just want to make sure that we're crossing our...
It's, it's not like any other vehicle.
Crossing our teeth.
It's not driven daily. There, there might be weeks at a time where it's not driven. It is just here, ready, and waiting for when we need it.
Okay, so I'm, what I'm hearing is that the cost would probably be similar to what you're currently expending for the tin can ambulance that you're using, probably similar costs because of the use of the vehicle. It's not a daily driver.
And maybe not as much, because the ambulance is requiring a lot of care these days.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions on this topic before we vote? Okay, all right. So, I have a proposed resolution, and I will read it, because this is an addendum to the agenda, so it's new. Be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, does hereby amend the budget and appropriate $398,000 to the general fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026 as follows. Functional area, public safety, amount, $398,000. This is from our undesignated general fund balance for the sheriff to purchase an armored vehicle, and it is within his carryover. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please. Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kitsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Matz?
Aye.
Seven aye.
Here you go.
Now go buy the vehicle.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
And our SWAT team thanks you as well.
Thank you very much for bringing this up for us. Okay, now we'll return to our regular agenda. Our first item, or our second item, excuse me, under new business is the New River Valley Hazard Mitigation Plan. We've got Bree presenting, and then we also have Chief Geary and Deputy Chief Hall available to answer any questions. Welcome, Bree.
Thank you. So, as you stated, we're just going to briefly go over the New River Valley Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is required by the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. It does require that all local and state government have an all hazards mitigation plan. We, if we do not have one, we are not eligible for some of the FEMA assistance, and then some other mitigation funding or grants. And this does support our National Flood Insurance Program, which we are a participant. So, it has been a joint effort regionally throughout the New River Valley. The original plan was adopted in 2005. We have since had two updates. It does focus on natural disasters and also human-caused hazards. So, as stated, it is a collaborative effort across the region. So, the New River Valley Regional Commission actually leads it, and they are the author of the plan. They developed a steering committee, and then had several working groups based on different hazard levels. And you can see here, we had multiple organizations and agencies involved throughout the entire process. So, it began in October of 2022, and the steering committee did meet monthly until August of 2023. They had lots of local experts in. Your representatives from Montgomery County were Tyler Hall and Kim Wright. They did go out with, to the public, to get some input. They had a survey. We did share all that information through Montgomery County social media. So, the emergency management phases were the first part of the planning. Looks at four phases, mitigation and preparedness. Both of those happen before there is a disaster. It measures, you know, it looks at long-term strategies and also plans and strategies to handle disasters as they occur. Then you go into response, which occurs during the event, and then recovery, which is focused on getting everything back to normal as quickly as possible after the event. There are lots of new land use planning and regulations out there, and the American Planning Association and FEMA have assisted us in coming up with what those efforts may be. So, they looked at identifying the hazard and doing risk assessment. They looked at two different criteria, locations, and then severity of the hazard. And then they further evaluated it based on different criteria, such as history, past mitigation, mitigation goals. And you can see the top three were severe winter weather, flooding, and high winds. Medium is wildfire and drought. And then low are the others, karst, tornado, rockfall, landslides, and earthquakes. That doesn't mean those won't occur here, it just means it's not as much of a risk. So, once they identify the risks, they then look at goals to address those risks and help mitigate impacts. A lot of those include education, helping others be prepared, minimizing economic losses, saving lives through training and awareness, and then encouraging planning practices to mitigate those impacts. So, Montgomery County between 1969 and 2022 had 53 presidentially declared disasters in Virginia, and 10 of those were also declared a disaster in Montgomery County. That does exclude any COVID declarations, so those were pulled out for the purpose of this. Since 2022, Montgomery County has had two additional declared disasters. Those were both related to Tropical Storm Helene. So, we have done a lot of hazard mitigation in the past. These are some completed and ongoing efforts that the county has participated in. Of course, the National Flood Insurance Program. We do have GIS layers that identify a lot of hazards, not just your flood zones, but dam inundation zones for Clayter Lake, wildfire risk, karst, shrink soil. We also have the identification of all pipelines that go through the county. We have I-Flos, which is the Integrated Flood Observing and Warning System. That is actually operated by the National Weather Service here in Montgomery County, the Reverse 911 System. Montgomery County is a storm-ready community with, and it's designated as such. The county has also improved its flood warning capability, and we collaborate with a lot of other agencies, the Virginia Department of Forestry, the New River Highlands RCND, and the National Forest Service to help mitigate wildfire impacts. And then, of course, we also look at hazard mitigation when we're looking at our comprehensive planning efforts. So, while we like to think we have it all covered, there's always additional things we can do, and so we've identified what those may be. Design equalization basin to protect wastewater treatment plants, the creation of pre-development database to utilize our GIS system to further evaluate wildfire risk in addition to flood hazard and shrink swell. We can enact ordinances to also help with, with wildfire mitigation. These can be things such as roofing ordinances or requiring clearing of brush-in trees within a certain amount during development. Look at eligibility for funding for flood hazard areas. So, we currently have 25 properties in Montgomery County that have a repetitive loss, so we could begin to look at funding for those, to pull those out, create some green space, and then they don't continue to, to have that loss. Additional I-Flo gauges, and then increasing the capability to protect soft targets from vehicle ramming attacks. So, the next steps. All localities are reviewing the plan and hopefully adopting it. Then, we will move into the plan implementation phase that looks at adopting policy changes. We will, like I stated, be including this in Montgomery Matters, so we have already forwarded the final document onto the consultants. Capital improvement plans, that's another thing that, that we can look at. Also, encouraging projects that physically change the environment to reduce impacts. That's the way we can help mitigate. Educating landowners and residents on how to protect themselves and their property. Explore grant funding and partner with other agencies to support identified mitigation opportunities. This plan is reviewed annually and/or after significant hazard events, if necessary, but it is updated every three years, and all of that is handled through the Regional Commission. I will be glad to take in your questions. I may have to pull Michael or Tyler up here to help. Let me know if you have any.
Okay. So, let's, let's start by a motion in a second, and then we'll open it up for discussion and questions. So, is there a motion to adopt, adopt the NRV Hazard Mitigation Plan?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, and now let's move to discussion. What kind of questions do we have for Bree or Tyler or Michael? Not seeing any on my left.
I mean, I, I don't have a question, but I will say, you know, this was reviewed at the last Planning Commission meeting, and in preparation for that, I, I had read several sections of this, and, I mean, obviously, there's a ton of work that has gone into this. So, thank you to your team and all the other agencies that have participated in this. But I was, I was just really encouraged by the allusion to, you know, being, trying to be as preventative and, you know, implement mitigation efforts to try to be able to, you know, weather these events, no pun intended, you know, better going forward. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we've had several events here recently that hopefully we've learned from and things like that. And it's good to know that those considerations were still, you know, integrated into this plan. So, I guess, just thank you.
Okay. I agree. I'm really glad that we have this, and I can't even imagine how much work went into it. So, thank you.
It was a lot of meetings.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments down here? Supervisor Bone?
What's I-Flo?
It is, I'm going to cheat and go back. It is a flood, basically, it measures Integrated Flood Observing and Warning System. So, it is a gauge that measures the level of rain in, in the stream, so that a way, it helps alert folks when it's getting close to flood level, I believe. I will go to Michael for that. Is that a good description?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Sorry, I do have one follow-up.
No, you already, you already said your piece.
A shot, my shot.
Just kidding. You can, you can go.
I didn't come across anything, but like, out of this, will there be any recommendations, proposals, a budget for what some of these, you know, strategies or actions might, you know, cost in terms of dollars, you know, capital expense, things like that?
So, a lot of that, probably the way it would work, the first thing we want to do, of course, is to get some of these mitigation efforts outlined in our comprehensive plan. And then the next would be to go and see what's available before we bring anything back to you.
Okay. Yeah, because I did see that was one of the bigs, right, right, is, is grants and...
Correct.
You know, other alternative sources of funding.
Correct. And, and some of those grants, we don't know if there would be a match or not, so that, that would be the type of things we would really have to look into. The other thing that you have to consider is, do we do the grant on a regional level? So, maybe we can do something through a flood study or something like that with Pulaski County, or the City of Radford, or, you know, the New River, that, that type of thing. And so, it would be a joint effort, and at that point, it would probably all go through the New River Regional Commission. So, it, it, it's hard to say. Yes, it could. It could also lead to some projects going into the Capital Improvements Program.
Okay.
Especially when you get into the repetitive loss, because I believe there is a match for that. So, how that program works is you identify a property that has repetitive loss, and then you get some grant or funding to basically purchase the property, but there has to be a match on the county side.
Gotcha.
And then you turn that into green space, so you don't continue to have that loss during flooding.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Both here.
Yeah, Bree, is there going to be any changes to the FEMA floodway maps?
Not that I am aware of. It will be interesting to see if we get anything after the flooding we've had here of recent, within the last year or two. I will say, for the most part, especially Tropical Storm Helene, when you look at our flood maps and you look at the flooding, they were pretty accurate. They were just updated in 2012. We still have a lot of localities that are using 1970 FEMA maps, so I don't know what their priorities are at this time. There is also some funding available potentially for having our approximated A-zones looked at. And what those are, those, those are zones that do not have base flood elevations designated. So, if someone wants to build in that, and we can't look at it and determine definitely if it's out of the flood zone or not, then they have to have a flood study performed to, to make sure that they're not going to be within the flood zone. There, there are some money, is some money out there potentially for that. I don't know how competitive it is. But I do not see any major changes taking place in the flood maps right now, since our last study was in 2012.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'll just add, I've seen this on the agendas for both Blacksburg and Christiansburg Town Councils. So, I know you guys are on kind of a tour around the county, or this plan is on a tour around the county.
Plan is on a tour. My understanding is it has been adopted by Pulaski County already, maybe City of Radford.
And I think I, I highlight that just to point out that it's one of the million ways in which our region collaborates, and I think that that should come as great comfort to citizens, that on a hazard mitigation plan, we are cooperating regionally to mitigate as much as possible. And seeing no other comments, I will ask Madam Clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kitsch?
Aye.
Mr. Matz?
Aye.
Seven aye. Thank you all for being here this evening. And I am getting a message that we would like to take a 10-minute break. So, it is 8:25. We will reconvene at 8:35, and the next issue we will take up is an ordinance to establish voter satellite offices.
I wanted to make sure that we were also giving members of our communities, particularly in the furthest away parts of our communities, access to early voting. So I guess, with that said, and I think looking at the budget for this, the way we've got this set up, we may even be spending, if you strip out the mailer, if you just look at the hard costs of actually staffing the locations, I think we're going to come in a little bit less than we spent last year, and we'll have an additional voting location. I know it's going to be fewer days and things like that. But with that said, I think that I can support this as presented.
Okay. Supervisor Biggs?
Well, I think you all have always heard me say that I truly believe in expanded access. And I'm really, really, really disappointed that we couldn't put it in Eastern Montgomery at a location. That was sad. That would have been good. I think because now it's down to two locations, I don't see the need for the postcards going out. I think that's a big expense, but I think we have social media, we have the ability to put flyers in public buildings and to spread the word. So I'm in favor.
Supervisor King?
Well, as I stated last, last time we discussed this last year, you might add it another early voting place, but I represent more people than them Reiner. I represent Pilot, I represent Plum Creek, and part of Christiansburg. If we have two early voting places, how's that fair to them? It's not. I'll give you a little statistics, and you can check on them. Most early voters vote the last two weeks of early voting. In Norfolk, Virginia, they have 143,533 registered voters. They have two colleges, the biggest naval base in the world. They have four satellite locations and their office. And they do the last Saturdays, the two Saturdays. Like I said, most voters come out the last two weeks. When we had the polling place in Blacksburg, out of 19,455 people, 25% voted over at the polling place. Most of them come to Christiansburg and voted at the voter registers office. As I stated last year, and we had a whole year to work on this, if we was going to do it, we had to be fair to every citizen, every citizen. We had to be fair to the voter registers office. We opened up that new place down there for everybody. And as it sees, I mean, you could look at the emails that we got, most of the people from Blacksburg went over there and You're asked in the voter registers office, which is going to be busy, to spend their Saturdays there, too. Right before the election, if I'm not wrong, most of them even have to work on Sunday. Right before the election, they work on Sunday to get everything ready. I think the staff at voter registers office does a great job. You have 45 days to vote.
Thank you. And this might actually be a good time. We do have a slide that shows general election voter turnout for the last four years. So if we could just put that on the screen, it might be good to just have some numbers for the sake of comparison that everybody can see. And while that's being loaded, Supervisor Kits, did you have something to add?
So I was a big one. I talked with Supervisor Grasky about making sure that we could cover the county, to make sure that we're equitable in how we allow people the opportunities to vote. I said it last time that I'm a big advocate for making sure they have access, but the flip side of that is how hard we worked our registrar's office. I think it was 250, 260 hours of overtime that is compensated, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, through, what is it?
Compensatory leave.
Yeah. So they're not getting paid so much as they're getting some extra time off. Flip side to that also, because I'm kind of conflicted on this, is that they're going to work the last two Saturdays in the Christiansburg, because that one's going to be open on Saturday because of early voting requirements otherwise, for the last two weeks. Knowing that Blacksburg represents 44,000 people within the county, roughly, what's it, 25% of the overall population, and they've 25% voted in early through there, we don't have a way of knowing whether it's students, whether it's just residents. This is where I start getting conflicted. The problem really kicks in when you go to Shawsville and it didn't work. Now granted, yeah, I got it, last minute thing, and the registrar jumped through some serious hoops, and I'm very appreciative of the efforts that she and her staff have put in. I want to make sure that they know that, to try to solidify those positions. For Reiner, and I know these guys didn't ask for it for their districts, I was just trying to be as fair as possible, and Supervisor Grasky came up with a good balance for that. Me and him were like, okay, how do we do this and maintain the integrity of the situation and allow us to make sure that the county's taken care of? So when I say I'm conflicted, I'm always going to support the voting portion. I'm conflicted on the point of how do we get there from here? The one set of constituency that asked for it repeatedly is Blacksburg. I can support it with the caveat that it's the reduced work on the staff, the reduced stress and pressure, and that if it comes down to it, because it is a 25% of the population, that I would support that area if the other two supervisors from the other rural areas aren't sure that that other part would be supported or is needed in their locations. So I hope I haven't gone around my elbow to get to my thumb. It's just, there are two sets of facts in this one, and it's, one is the workload, one is the access. And to be able to maintain the integrity of the situation and to be able to look myself in the mirror and go, I'm doing the best that I can for the people without outside influence, I try to support the three satellite locations and cut down on the hours and the time for the registrar's office. So I don't know now, because we've lost Shawsville, and I'm not sure that Supervisor King, in his comments, feels that the one for Reiner is, I'm not saying needed or wanted at this time, but in his eyes and from the constituency emails, not necessary in his area, and that may change, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, so I apologize, that we support it for Blacksburg but on a limited scale. Because the biggest thing is the, and nobody asks this, because nobody says this and nobody brings this number up, is the workload. And that's the thing that upsets me the most, because everybody's really flippant about money, they're flippant about locations, but they're not talking about the people that actually have to do it. And I think that's something that needs to be addressed, and you cannot bypass it for a want of expediency and inability to place it on the forefront. So with that said, and I know that's a lot, I've been really back and forth on this because of the work. It's the work, and I think that's the biggest one. So, yeah, I'll support it, but on a more limited basis. And even though I know 25%, and it matched up with the population, 25% voted early last time, Blacksburg represents 25% of the population, I really need to see these numbers, and I need to see them, like, I say me, I say we, I apologize. I'm a big numbers guy. I need to be able to see the justification, because if it's not justified, 25%, okay, you have my attention. But if it's not justified, we can't continue through this loop of, oh, well, we'll do it this time. Oh, well, we'll do it this time. I said last time it would justify it, 25% allows me to say that, but we can't get it in the other areas, and not that they want it, but this has got to be, this has got to be it. There's got to be some finality in this, and people got to understand, just because one area asks for it and the other rest of the county doesn't, we've got to be able to weigh that in and be fair. And being fair and equitable also means understanding that sometimes one group is not going to be as adjusted for as the others. I'll support it this time, but on a more limited basis in order to reduce the stress and the hours on the registrar's staff. I know they're going to be open on the 25th and the 1st. I would go with the 18th, because we're going down, and that's what we advertised, I think. We're going down from 12 days to three additional days. That's what I can do and I can support.
So what I'm hearing from you, and I'll interject, is that you are interested in pursuing an early voting satellite location for Blacksburg only?
Yes, sorry, that was a really roundabout way. I just had to get that out.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. And just keeping with, interjecting, I actually agree with you completely. I was moved by citizen comment tonight, and also a lot of comment has come out of my district, Blacksburg, where the Blacksburg Community Center is. So there's been a lot of demand specifically from my district to establish a satellite site for the Blacksburg Community Center. And so we'll see how the discussion goes. But I don't know that we've demonstrated a desire or need to have an early voting satellite location in Reiner. Supervisor Ben?
I'm wondering if I can put our registrar on the spot.
I think she's here to answer questions, if we have questions about information that she has access to. Welcome, Ms. Fire. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Would you tell us if we, if the decisions that we were about to make were putting undue stress on your staff?
Absolutely.
Okay. I am, thank you, that's all I, thank you. And you haven't said that.
She did.
Or am I not asking the right question?
You haven't asked.
Is this putting undue pressure on your staff?
Absolutely.
If we only had a Blacksburg location, is that make it that much more manageable? Or is it still a lot of undue stress?
So you all have all of the comp hours that my staff makes. They made a lot of comp hours last election due to presidential election. We didn't work all of those Saturdays last election. We still have a lot of work after the election is actually over. On election day, we worked 18 to 20 hours. That's after we've pulled a lot of overtime prior to that. Now that we've added same-day registration, we're talking lots of comp hours after that election, where we have to be at our best when we're entering that information on election night and the many, many days thereafter. So yes. So my staff has children, they have grandchildren, they have health needs, they have everything that every one of you up here have. They do not have those Saturdays and Sundays to do those things. Yes, we do work Sunday prior to the election, after we've worked our mandated days and the two Saturdays. Then we pull those long hours to get to election day. So yes, it is hurtful. Absolutely.
It sounds like you need more staff. Is that true?
So that's a good question. So elections are up and down, and so any more, we're up. So when same-day registration came about, that floods us. So I don't really know what the answer is. Part-time staff during the peak election days, but then you have training issues.
What do other counties do?
They have part-time staff that come in to help.
Does it work?
Yes, as far as I know.
I would hope that we would look into that, because it sounds like even if we weren't going to do early voting in Blacksburg, it sounds like same-day registration, or whatever you call that, has just made their job unrealistic. Hmm, that's not the right word, but undue effort of some kind.
Created a hardship.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Which I don't believe we want any of our staff to have to go through. Now, I understand, you know, you're not technically our staff, all of you, but we wouldn't want any government employee to have to have undue stress. So I don't know what we can do about, you know, this election, but I would hope that we could do something for future elections, because that sounds unreasonable. And I am incredibly grateful that you all are not complaining more than you, you know, and I don't hear you complaining. That's why I said I wanted to put you on the spot, just because I hadn't really heard it to the extent that it wasn't as clear as it really, the complaints, if they were coming, weren't as clear as they needed to be for me. So I really would like to have early voting in Blacksburg. But if it's, you know, if we even curtail it to one day, that's all about better than zero. But if we can have it for two days, that's better. Would I, you know. So, thank you.
And Vice Chair Fitchkowski, you've not had an opportunity to say anything yet. I know other people want to weigh in some more. Go ahead.
Thank you. Go ahead and make this acknowledgement. None of my district is in Blacksburg. Zero. None of it. I kind of made a little list I'm going down, and my first note I wrote myself is, voting couldn't be easier than it is right now. This proposal is unnecessary. I think it is a waste of taxpayer dollars. It's a burden on the registrar's office employees. And even if Shawsville had remained on the list, that doesn't make it equitable. The only thing that makes it equitable is to open up every polling place. Now, we're going to leap from five figures to, I don't know how much that would be, it'd probably be close to half a million dollars to do something like that, because now the registrar's office would have to probably hire, I don't know, 50 people to run all of them for 45 days? Yeah, it's getting out of hand. And the fact that Shawsville is not in the mix is outrageous. Are my citizens less than your citizens? They're not. They're equal to. So this needs to be rejected tonight. And if you want to consider it, especially in a gubernatorial, it's even half, not even half the people came out. It's the presidential elections that are the big ones that probably might be able to justify something, some kind of change. But the loss of Shawsville gave no time for us to consider anything else, which is why, if you want to have this conversation, January's a good time, February's a good time, but not when you're getting close into the start of the early voting. And I also believe that this adds voter confusion, because we keep changing the game. We keep changing the rules. Okay, no, now you get to vote over here. And next year, you get to vote over there. It's not, it's not, it's not good for our voters, I don't think. And I still can't help but think of the money we spent on a new registrar's office, because they had completely outgrown their other one, and all the considerations that we looked at to pick that particular office. And one of them, one of the most important to everybody, everybody on this board, was that we get it on a bus route so that people can get there. It is on a bus route. It's a big facility. It's working very well, but I don't think we've ever allowed it to work the way it's supposed to. We keep changing it. We need to try an election where we just do it the way the registrar has set it up. You have early voting in one location, you can mail in your vote anywhere in the county, anywhere. And if you need, if you need help, they'll mail it to you. I mean, it couldn't be easier, like I said. And I think this, this whole, and I was serious the last time when I said, I appreciate the fact that you did try to spread it out around the county. But that's not equity. That's not equity. But now that has failed in Shawsville, that's a slap in the face. That's all I got.
Okay. You can probably sit down, but don't leave. I just don't want to make you have to stand there the whole time. Oh, wait, Connie, I'm so sorry. Supervisor Kits has a question for you specifically.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. That's why I was trying to hedge you off for you.
Sorry.
So you said, part-time staff. How long early would you have to hire them in advance of an election to be able to have them trained properly and to brought on where you're comfortable with them?
So we would probably have to hire officers of elections, just because they're used to some of our details and things as it is. So we would have to bring those on early enough to get them trained up to what we do. So I'd say probably late summer, at least, early summer.
But you need those positions no matter what, honestly. You would say, yes, you need those to, because of the early voting and the same-day registration?
Same-day registration's been a killer.
So you would need those anyway?
One new employee in the fiscal year '26 budget, but that, so that started in July, which wasn't really time to get them up to?
No, not '26.
'25?
'25.
Okay. I couldn't remember. I knew recently that you had received one, but that's still a burden at this point.
Yes.
The reason I'm saying that is you said you needed them anyway. I think it's something that needs to be addressed, that I don't know how we do that as far as making sure that you have the people that you need minus this situation?
So any college town will tell you, any registrar's office in a college town will tell you, same-day registration has been a huge burden. For us, we received 4,340 last year. That is, they are applications. You enter each application. After you've entered each application, you wait on a report from the state to download to find any duplicates, people that have voted twice throughout Virginia. Then you have a provisional meeting before the electoral board. All of this is on a timed deadline. So yes, every college town in Virginia has suffered from this.
Okay. That's my big thing. It's like, what would you need, what would you need to be successful and reduce some of the stress, again, subtracting this situation right now on a standard basis moving forward?
What I'm hearing is, it's like an accountant who, like, build, build, builds to April 15th, bam, that's when all the busyness is.
That's correct.
It's like me, I'm preparing for all of the move-outs, and then it's the busyness.
That's correct.
And so it's not year-round part-time help that you need, it's situational part-time help that you need.
That's correct.
Seasonal, that's, yeah.
That's correct.
Supervisor Ben?
Can I just ask for a little bit of clarification? It's not that we have students that make us, I think you mean, you want, we want voters. We don't want to deter voters.
Students do not adhere to deadlines, so they use what they have available to them. So they're using the same-day registration. It's their given right since 2020.
That's right. It's everybody's right to use. It just so happens that more, the population, the student population uses it.
99% are students.
Yeah.
That's correct.
You have 37,018 to 22-year-olds in the town of Blacksburg.
Right.
So, okay, do we have any more comments over here? Okay, I will just put in for consideration, you can, I don't have any questions for you, thank you. I'll put in for consideration and discussion, opening a Saturday site in Blacksburg on Saturday, October 25th, and Saturday, November 1st, and considering operating those two sites on those Saturdays only with no other locations. Taking into consideration, Friday, October 24th is a home game, and Saturday, November 1st is a home game. So there's going to be transportation problems getting in and out of Blacksburg that further complicate matters. And I also think it's important to point out, and we touched on it a little bit, but I really just want to highlight it, that comp time is not income. It is time that people earn that they can take off later if it's available for them to take. So you could have an employee that works 60 hours in the buildup to an election, loses that time with their family, their personal life, what they want to do in their personal time, and their only compensation is, down the road, maybe I can take a day off here, a day off there. And while I know employees appreciate comp time, it's not the same as earned income, where, you know, a lot of people, if they work 40-plus, they get paid time and a half. That is not what's happening here. So what we're asking, in my opinion, is a real hardship on human beings with lives. And so that's why I put forward early voting on the final two Saturdays in Blacksburg, where we're seeing the demand. What do we think about that? Okay?
Well, you, you said the Saturday before the Tuesday election.
Mm-hmm.
That is going to throw them more under the bus, because they got to work that Sunday, too.
Well, they have to work that Saturday in Christiansburg, too, as I understand it. That's correct, yeah. The final two Saturdays before the election, they have to staff the office.
Let me remind all the board members what the voter register just said. It's put her staff in hardship. Think about that before you vote on this. She was asked a question, and she give you an answer.
Yes, sir, Marty.
I just wanted to clarify, because what the board's responsibility is, is to pass the ordinance designating these areas as satellite offices. Then you work with the general registrar to determine what days it'll be manned or the satellite that early voting will take place, and you also have to confirm that that spot is available. And so I don't know anything about the two dates that you're putting out there. This board wouldn't be approving those two dates. You would be approving the location, and I mean, you can ask the registrar now if she thinks those two dates would work. I don't know if she can, but, or whether the locations open at those two dates. Does that make sense?
I think we do know that the location is available for the dates. And yes, that makes sense. So then I'll change my request to, can we advertise, or I'm asking if we can advertise just for the Blacksburg location. Supervisor Grasky?
If I were to support this, I'd be, honestly, I'd be folding like a lawn chair up here, right? Because last year, I said I wouldn't support this, not because, again, not because I don't support the early vote, but if I'm going to support expanded early voting, then we need to ex- Not because I, again, not because I don't support the early vote. But if I'm going to support expanded early voting, then we need to expand early voting. And this is just a repeat of, you know, we're just, we just keep kicking that can down the road, kind of like was mentioned earlier. And, you know, I I'd be I'd be caving to what I think is is right and just. And I don't feel comfortable doing that, so.
Well, and I think it's important to note, too, as Vice Chair Fidzikowski pointed out, we spent almost a million dollars on the voter registration office in Christiansburg. And that's an important consideration. Supervisor Ben?
Did Supervisor King say that he didn't want to have early voting in his district?
I've had nobody reach out to me and want it.
So you're okay not having it?
No, I'm not. I'm okay with that, but what I'm saying, I represent more people than Reiner.
We all do. We all have large districts except for the chair.
Why don't we put this off till next year and figure out how we can do it for everybody? What was said last year is we're going to see how this works. Well, we seen how it worked. 4,900 people voted, 25% out of 19455. You tried that last year. Let's put this off till we can figure out how to do it for the whole county.
I don't think we're ever going to do it for the whole county. I don't think that any county does it at every precinct.
Every every county don't pick one spot and put it either.
Well, there's no county that's exactly the same as ours. That's understandable.
From what I understand, they do. And you said it in Norfolk's, and I apologize for jumping in.
No, no, it's okay. I was just directing you to your mic.
Yeah, you said Norfolk had four satellite locations for Norfolk, correct? For 143,000, they put up four more, right?
143,533 registered voters. That's two colleges and the biggest naval base in the world.
So they had to put additional locations up for.
They do it the last two weeks.
Right, and that's all we're doing. We're talking about two days on the last two weeks that the Saturdays where the registrar's office would be open. And not super happy, but I understand where Blacksburg's coming from because if you look at it percentage-wise, it's a percentage of the population exactly represented in the county's population. So it was 25% of the population in Blacksburg, 25% of the people voted in Blacksburg prior to using that for 12 days. I think that kind of reinforces the point. And I'm not sure how, I think Harrisonburg's close to us for JMU. So I think that would be a representation, but I'm not sure. But understanding that where the population center is and being able to adjust to that, I think, is important. But I'm I'm not against what y'all are saying either because this is this is not coming up. I've got a little bit from my district, and I don't have Blacksburg. I've just got some of Christiansburg. And most of my people can go to the registrar's office. So as much as I'm conflicted, I I can go with cutting it down to the days where the registrar would be open on those days. But I also want to know that we need to address moving forward, all of this information in January? And it needs to be done in January? And that we need to be able to give her the tools she needs to be to be successful? I.e., if it's part-time people during the summer. So I know we're past that, and I know Marty's leaning towards his mic. He's going to tell me something. What I can and can't do. Not that it stops me, but um, but that we have to address this in January. We have to be able to look at this. We have to be able to give her the tools she needs to be successful and to reduce the wear and tear so this happy little go-around doesn't happen every single time. I'm with January on this to get it get that done. I support this because, like I said, as much time as I spent in Iraq and fighting for people to be able to vote, and the same thing for Afghanistan. As much as I I hate putting any stress on her, and I've actually told her this personally, it bothers me that we're doing this, but I know that there's something that, moving forward, that I can support on a limited basis to reduce the stress. So I just want to put it there. January, this has to be addressed, not an if and or but. And the tools she needs for part-time seasonal needs to be brought up so it can be put into the cycle so we can do it effectively and make sure she's taken care of. So.
I think.
Sorry, I jumped into something.
No, no, you're fine. I think probably can we put that on our list of extended work session topics or?
Yes, we can do that.
So we can have a more whole discussion about this.
Yes.
In January, when there's plenty of time to talk it through and staff up if needed. So that's point one.
It might be before January.
It might be before January. Ask and you shall receive. Supervisor Ben?
All right. Those who are math-inclined, stay with me and see if I'm thinking about this correctly. If the Hampton Roads area that you mentioned earlier has 140,000 registered voters. I'm looking at last year's percent of. Do we even know what the number of registered voters is?
64-ish thousand.
So they're a little bit more than twice as big. So if we were trying to keep up, we would have two. We wouldn't have four in the county. So so it at least if we're using that as the measure, we would by no means ever have one in every district even. So I'm not quite sure if this is apples and oranges at this point. And that I'm not even say, I'm I'm trying to kind of bring you along because maybe you need to, and I'm not criticizing you either, but maybe you have to shift and say, that's really not what we want anyway. You know, we don't want one in every district. Gosh, you're right, let alone every precinct. So but it does seem that it is common here in Virginia to have some additional early voting locations. And and if that's the measure, we should at least have one. Don't necessarily have to have two because they're they're more than twice the size. I I'm just throwing that out there.
Sure. And I don't think it's the measure, it's a measure, right? It's it's an example. Yeah, exactly, you know, so. But I think, I mean, when I look at the data, you know, I'm not, my my district overwhelmingly votes at the Christians, the early voters overwhelmingly vote in Christiansburg. They don't even vote at, they use the Blacksburg location, sure. But overwhelmingly, they utilize the Christiansburg location, at least in the last election, right? So, you know, my my folks have have a dog in this fight. It's just a small dog. But, you know, yeah, I mean, yeah, you think about it proportionally. Now, now, Todd, was it, sorry, going back to the the article or, you know, the your reference there. Did you say their registrar's office plus four satellite locations? So five. So, you know, two, three, somewhere in that neighborhood. I just, you know, i- if, you know, we're talking about, you know, some of the arguments for this and why we need to have one in Blacksburg is, you know, access to, you know, transportation issues, long lines, et cetera. You know, Blacksburg is is, I wouldn't call it an urban, you know, population, but it is it is pretty densely populated. And there is prolific public transportation within the town, right? So transportation issues are very different, challenges are very different for somebody in Blacksburg than they are for somebody in far eastern Montgomery or out Allegheny Springs or over in Pilot, right? Now, maybe those folks are also more accustomed to having to travel for their day-to-day things. And, you know, that's built into it. But, you know, if if we're going to drop one in the densest population, why would we not create some access in those more rural, spread-out areas where they're having to, you know, trek a long ways to cast their early vote? And they clearly exercise that right to cast their early vote at the location that we've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into.
But if they don't want it, why would we do that anyway?
Yeah, that's fair.
And I completely understand why your people would go to Christiansburg. They don't have to go through Blacksburg to get to Christiansburg, right? But the people on our side have to go through, if they were going to take public transportation, it does take more than an hour round trip to get to. I mean, it probably takes a good hour and a half round trip. And then you're going to have to wait for the bus because, you know, it takes a sec, it takes three minutes to vote and then you have to wait for the next bus to come. I have done that route several times and it's, I would only do it if I had an unlimited amount of time because it is not not convenient.
Yeah, but if we're going to be using Norfolk or the Tidewater area for an example?
I brought it up.
We can't, we can't use that for an example. Oh, no, no, but I'm 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 addressing. And I appreciate Supervisor Grasky bringing it up. There's no bus that runs to Allegheny Springs or Ironto or Elliston. There is none. Are there any buses that run from Blacksburg?
Are there any buses that run from Creg Creek or Mount Taber?
But they do run from Blacksburg.
Town.
They do run from Blacksburg.
Just like everybody.
So transportation issues, if anybody has them, it's going to be people in the outlying areas.
That's right. So Chair Dematz is the only one that doesn't have to worry about this because we all have very distant places in our district.
You all do seem to be very worried about it, but it doesn't sound like you're going to vote that way. So I think you're, I think you're all are kind of disingenuous in this issue. If transportation, and that's what we heard from a lot of citizens, it's hard for people to get from Blacksburg to Christiansburg.
It is.
It's way harder to get to Christians or to Black, to Christiansburg from Ironto. There's no buses, there's nothing. And and to bring up, well, if they didn't ask for it, then they maybe they don't want it. Or maybe it could be because for decades and decades, they voted the same way. Maybe that's the why, maybe that's why they 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 don't ask for it in outlying areas. They they're accustomed to not getting any help. But the people that have the help demand the service in their in their own town. So to me, that's, if you're going to help people, you got to help people that need the help.
Well, and I'll.
And it's not Blacksburg.
I'll advocate for my district a little bit. So my district is tiny by comparison to all of the rest of the districts in Montgomery County. I mean, probably 10% in landmass or smaller than the next larger. I mean, it is tiny because it is so incredibly densely populated. It's multifamily housing. It is a whole lot of college students, a whole lot of first-time voters. I'm sure a lot of those same-day voter registrations are coming out of my district. And and so it makes sense for me, transportation aside, I think there's validity to how long it does take to get from District G to the registrar's office in Christiansburg. I mean, that is a huge commitment for a brand-new voter who's also trying to balance the demands of, you know, living alone for the very first time, how they get groceries if they don't have a vehicle, how they get around town and navigate their classes. One of my residents' parents referred to the student age as free trial adults. And there's a lot of stuff, I don't, I don't know that I necessarily agree with that, but there's a lot of stuff that it's like the very first time that it's being figured out. And you're in a population center that is asking for this exactly right there, which is why I support it in Blacksburg because I'm hearing loudly from District G residents that that's what they want. I'm hearing it phone calls, emails at the grocery store here tonight. I'm hearing loud and loud and clear that it makes sense for District G, which happens to be in the town of Blacksburg and would benefit other Blacksburg districts. But I'm I'm not hearing it from Reiner and Shawsville on the same level. And I think it's also due to choices that we all make along the way. I have made a conscious decision to live within a mile and a half of the university and all of the fun stuff that comes with that. I think some other people would really not like to have a house right beside them, in front of them, behind them, where they can see into their neighbors' windows. I think a lot of people up here would prefer not to live like that. I've made that conscious decision. And so I I I don't want to lose the, this is the population center of of the county. And I I think we can serve them in this way in a very small scale. Taking into consideration, I do, I do appreciate that this is a hardship, even what I'm asking. I sincerely appreciate that. And I think the idea of looking at this more broadly well before we're at a deadline is a really good approach for future years. But we're not hearing demand from outside, we're not hearing a lot of demand from outside of the town of Blacksburg. That's why I am, that's why I support having it in Blacksburg. And I don't see a need to have it beyond the town. And for the two days.
You're going to have to come back to me.
Okay.
Sorry.
Does anybody else have anything? Supervisor Ben?
Well, I was just going to add that both Supervisor Bone and myself, we have within our districts, people that have bus transportation, but we also have parts of our district that do not. So it's not just like it's real easy for some of our folks to use the transportation because it's not there.
I would say that most of my district does not have bus transportation. I I would also say none of Supervisor Fidzikowski's district has any transportation. Mr. Grasky, you probably have a little bit, yeah. So, yeah, I I think that this is important to to move forward with. All we're doing is approving a possible location. We can't even say that people can vote yet.
The motion that we have in front of us right now approves two possible locations.
Yeah. The other thing that I wanted to say is when we're thinking about January or even before January to start working, it's sort of like the concept of a task force or, you know, even the the thing that Bree talked about. You need kind of, somebody needs to look at some numbers and, you know, sort of how we look at, how we looked at Mark's report, too, right? Let's look at the different similar counties and all that kind of stuff, so.
I think we do have clear direction from the board to look at that.
Yeah.
So we will.
That's great. I think I think we should go forward with the vote.
So the motion that we have in front of us right now is an ordinance to establish voter satellite offices at, my computer is not keeping up with me, at the Blacksburg Community Center and at Auburn High School. That's the motion that we have in front of us. If we do not amend the motion or in any way, we'll proceed with the vote.
I thought there was an amendment already.
There was an amendment to remove Shawsville Middle School. So now we have two left, Blacksburg Community Center and Auburn High School.
But even if we approve this, we don't have to approve when the dates come out? Any future votes, any future early voting in Auburn? Is that true?
You're not setting the dates, but if you're, no, you're not going to use Auburn, you shouldn't have it in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Turn on your mic.
What?
I thought you had a question.
No, it was the, that was the question of the amendment. And that's.
The the first amendment was, because the ordinance was advertised with three satellite, but then we found out in the, during this process, the Shawsville one doesn't work. So now. So now the motion was made in a second with amendment that those two would be considered. But, I mean, you could see if there's a amendment to that in a second on the, on the. But there's, well, or you can vote on Auburn and Blacksburg. And if, and if the votes no, then you, then you, someone could bring up just Blacksburg.
Can we do that procedurally? Or would we move to the next item on the agenda?
No, no, you would do it procedurally, yeah. But, but I mean, someone could say, let's amend the current motion and just do the one location.
The current motion was made by Supervisor Biggs, so she'd have to be willing to amend her motion.
Right, and then the second would have to say that they're good with that as well.
Yeah. Should Supervisor King, it doesn't sound like you really want any early voting. I get it. But that also means that you wouldn't want it in your district anyway if, if it was possible.
I didn't make a motion.
No, I know, but I'm just asking for some, well, anyway.
I think he's already answered that he doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm willing to, to second an amendment to the amended motion.
Okay, I will, although it disturbs me to do this because I've always wanted it to be fair, but I will amend the motion for only the Blacksburg site for this particular time.
And you're willing to accept the friendly amendment to your second?
I am.
Okay. Marty, a follow-up question related to the timing of early voting. So the, the schedule is set by the registrar's office, correct?
Correct, yeah, in coordination with the registrar, yeah. And I think she's got rules she's got to follow as well, so. And then whatever schedule she comes out with, she has to advertise within 55 days, correct? Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion with an amendment and then an amendment and a second with two amendments as well. Are we ready to call roll? Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll. Oh, excuse me.
So qualify, clarify what we're voting for on this particular motion.
So on this particular motion, we are voting on an ordinance establishing voter satellite offices in the Blacksburg Community Center Multipurpose Room located at 725 Patrick Henry Drive, Blacksburg, Virginia, to be used for absentee voting in person for the November 4th, 2025 general election only.
Okay. Second.
Okay, well.
Yeah.
All right, so we are.
It's already been done.
Yeah, she's, it's already been seconded. So we've got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, if you will call the roll, please.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski?
No.
Mr. King?
No.
Mr. Grasky?
No.
Ms. Biggs?
Yes.
Ms. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Dematz?
Aye.
Four aye, three nay.
Okay. So, moving on. Our next item of new business is a proposed ordinance approving an agreement between Montgomery County and the Public Service Authority. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this topic? We've discussed it in several meetings leading up to this.
Yeah.
Supervisor King.
As I stated in every meeting we spoke at, I don't agree with this. I don't think it's the right thing to do. But I'm reading through this and it's saying that the county is going to take over the maintenance on all PSA buildings. Right?
Yes, and then the county would charge the PSA for those costs.
Do I?
Then the county would charge the PSA for those costs.
That's first I heard of that.
I believe it's in the agreement.
It is, that's what I'm saying. It is now. So how, how is that going to work?
Like you want an example of how it's going to work, is that what you're saying?
We got about 30 places we mow. So who's going to mow them?
The same, the employees that currently mow them would still mow them. We would track those costs, all of the costs in a department of the county's general fund so that we would know what the costs are so we could bill them back to the PSA.
So the people that's mowing them now, which is PSA employees, will keep mowing them.
That is correct. If there was a time that we needed to shift around, if there was a shortage and we needed to shift around and somebody from General Services or Lands, Landscaping needed to mow an area that is currently mowed by the PSA for some perp, you know, if there was a reason for that, we would have to keep track of that time and the cost associated with it and bill it back to the PSA. And we have systems in place now to track time for people that spend time with the financial aspects of the PSA. So we're already able to do that.
Right. Okay. Well, as I stated, I think this is the wrong route to go.
Supervisor Bone?
I just want to, if anybody has been following my comments, just to clear the air about this is I struggled to see any benefit for it until I talked to our county administrator and she told me that the employees of the PSA have always felt like, what do you call it, the stepchildren, I don't know, whatever, right? But to, for them to convey that they would appreciate being part of the county made the difference to me. So I'm all good.
I did not talk to everyone, but several of them told me that, yes.
And did anybody say that it was gonna make it worse?
None, no PSA employees have told me it would make it worse.
Thank you. That's why my vote is going to be different than maybe people perceived that it was going to be.
Okay, is there any other discussion on this topic before the vote? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
No.
Mr. Grasky?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Dematz?
Aye.
Six aye, one nay.
Next item on the agenda is participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims. Don't know if we have anything, Marty?
Yeah, that's me. I actually have that one and the next one are both opiate-related settlements. As you know, we've been going through this for some time now and there's been two national, nationwide settlements that the board needs to approve. The first one is basically eight remnant opioid manufacturers. So there's smaller-scale manufacturers than, than the board has already settled with. This nationwide settlement's about $720 million. Virginia has already approved the settlement at the Commonwealth level. And now the localities turns to approve it. Virginia will get $16.4 million in, in this settlement that, that localities will be able to use. And so outside counsel is recommended approval. And I recommend that the board adopt the resolution approving that settlement.
Okay. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Grasky?
Aye.
Mr. Dematz?
Aye.
Seven aye.
I should have pointed out, the money's going to be distributed like all the other settlements where there's a, there's a structure in place where the localities are paid based on incidences that, that they've had and there's a formula set up for that. So, so that's how, that's how we'll get our direct money and then there'll also be money available through the Opiate Authority. The second settlement is Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family. Purdue Pharma is the company that Sackler ran. They're one of the biggest manufacturers of opioids. When all this hit, Purdue went into bankruptcy. And so that stopped us being able to go after them. The bankruptcy plan initially was approved, but then held by the, rightly so by the U.S. Supreme Court where they, they gave the Sacklers immunity and the Sacklers aren't part of the bankruptcy. Purdue Pharma is the company that's in bankruptcy. And so it went back through the bankruptcy plan and now they have a plan that's approved. But you're also going to have to approve a settlement with the Sackler family. And so there's two things outside counsel's asking. This is also a nationwide settlement. It's in the roughly about $6.5 billion is what the Sacklers and Purdue Pharma will be paying. Localities in Virginia, it's estimated will be getting about $40 million of that over a 15-year period. And what the board's asked to approve today is approve the bankruptcy plan. That's been done by our bankruptcy lawyers at the nationwide, at this national bankruptcy proceeding. And then also approve the Sackler settlement where Sackler is, is giving a lot of money and in return, we're, we'll be releasing them, we and all the other localities. And the Commonwealth of Virginia's also approved this, so.
Okay, so on this one.
You've proven two things.
This is the resolution to accept Purdue Pharma bankruptcy plan and participate in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against Sackler. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? I have lots of things to say, but I'll keep it to myself because I don't know if I could say it nicely.
It's just long overdue.
It's, I'll keep my words inside of my mouth. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Grasky?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Dematz?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the next item is a resolution establishing the personal property tax relief percentage for 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Grasky?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Dematz?
Aye.
Seven aye.
Okay, the next item is county capital fund appropriations. And Angie, I understand you've got something to add before we.
I can explain that a little bit. We issued bonds in 2022 and part of those bonds were used for Teal Park, Creed Fields, and the Magistrate and Court Services building. The proceeds earned interest as we were constructing the project and using the proceeds. This resolution appropriates a portion of those, of the interest earnings to be used in the future for capital projects. We also earned more interest than we had, than we were paying. There's an arbitrage calculation. And so it also appropriates the remittance of those funds. So a portion of the interest that we earned, we have to pay back to the Internal Revenue Service. And then those bonds will be closed out and we won't earn any more interest. We'll wrap that issuance up.
I think it's probably also important to note that these are only on the county side. These have nothing to do with the school bonds. That's a different item for a different agenda.
That's correct.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this topic? Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Grasky?
Aye.
Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. Dematz?
Aye.
Seven aye.
Okay, our final item of new business is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month for September 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Grasky?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Dematz?
Aye.
Seven aye.
Okay, moving on, we have county attorney report.
I have enough report tonight.
Enough talking tonight, I understand. County Administrator's report, Angie.
I first would like to thank Amy Marshall for being our clerk tonight. She stepped up and did this on short notice and you did a great job. Thank you, Amy. I appreciate that. Also, Amy has a vital role in the Employee Engagement Committee who hosted the employee picnic this weekend at Teal Park on Saturday. Several of you were able to attend that. It was a great turnout and a great event. Thank you for that as well. Montgomery Matters is going well. We had, last week in Shawsville, we had an open house. Our next one is in Plum Creek, at Plum Creek Park on September the 4th. We had a good turnout, as I said, in Shawsville. And then I also wanted to let you know that we've been successfully onboarding our career firefighters. And the next 28-day shift starts on August 31st. So beginning August 31st, we will be providing career fire protection in the Elliston area. That is all I have for tonight.
Great report. All right, we'll move to supervisors' reports and I will start with Supervisor Bone.
No report.
Okay. Supervisor Kits?
No report.
Supervisor King? Supervisor Biggs?
Well, I just reported, I went to the Dialogue on Race on Saturday at Huckleberry Park and they had a very successful meeting. It started at four, it's over a little after six o'clock. And I also wanted to wish that all of our Montgomery County public school employees, students, and parents have a successful school year. I know how hard they work. And I think that, I just wanted to put that out there, especially after a comment that was made tonight. Another thing I want to say is I am so proud of our Board of Supervisors because we sat up here and we talked about two really sort of difficult things. And we talked about it in a civil manner. And I'm here to tell you that that's not the way it is all across the state. And I just felt like I need to say that. And thank staff for everything. I also recognize with the registrar and the extra work that we've asked for. And I recognize that we need to move forward in January like was suggested by Supervisor Kits to look at that. And that's it.
All right, Supervisor Grasky?
Just a couple of quick things. Me and a couple of my boys attended the Roten Fish Fry for August. Had a great turnout. It was, it's just real fun to see, you know, members from across the community come together over good food, good music, and just hanging out. And it was a beautiful day. It was like one of our not-hot, humid days. So it was just a great day to be outside. So that was a lot of fun. They've got one more in September, so check that out. And then just to kind of tag on, you know, you talked about Montgomery Matters, Ms. Hill. And so I was at the Planning Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago and we got an update on that. And then we had a Steering Committee meeting as well. And the engagement from the community has been really great and they're starting to transition into drafting plans and things like. So it's really exciting to, to watch this come together, hear the feedback. So I'm just really looking forward to seeing the, the output of this, of this program. Thank you.
Vice Chair Fidjikowski?
The turnout for Montgomery Matters in Shawsville was, was more than expected, more than I expected. And I think things went very well, a lot of input, a lot of mention of pickleball courts, which we'll bring up later. There was also a very good turnout at the Elliston meeting at the elementary school. Lot of people interested in where we're heading and what we're going to do. So I think it's great that they, they came out and voiced their.
it's great that they, uh, they came out and voiced their opinion. Also enjoyed the, uh, the county picnic, but Archie will not be invited back. Well, at least I won't be giving him a ride. Uh, he, he, he was overwhelmed, but, uh, it was a great picnic, that's all.
Well, I do hope when people brought up pickleball that you directed them to our Parks and Rec Master Plan Survey so they can provide that input, um, because that's being solicited right now as well as companion to Montgomery Matters. Um, I just wanted to report on a couple of things. Of course, today was Virginia Tech's first day of classes, and so, uh, the whole tone and attitude of the town has changed over the past 10 days. Uh, every day it got a little bit busier, a little bit busier, a little bit busier, so now it's back to business as usual in the town, and it's really, really great, um, to see all of the new faces. Um, if you drive through downtown, you see packs of, um, I'm showing my age, but very young people, um, figuring it out and making their way, um, and it's just a very exciting time for the community. We get to meet a lot of new hokies for the very first time, so, um, that's really exciting for the community. And then also, um, on the subject of civility, I did wanna highlight, um, that Supervisor Biggs was asked, um, to be on a panel at the recent Virginia Association of Counties, um, meeting, where she was able to talk on the subject of civility. So that is coming from a place where she has just heard horror stories from around the state and is able to relate that back to our board, so thanks for mentioning that, and thanks for representing Montgomery County so well and Richmond at that, on that panel. And with nothing else, we are adjourned.